Hey, Rob. Of the safety department, you guys know I speak to that all the time. I know, and we have to look at limitations on what's. I know of at least three houses right by my beach house. That rent to six to 10 people and there's one bedroom in that place. And there's six to 10 people coming out of there. And if there's ever a fire, they're gonna, you know, we're gonna be in deep trouble because there's one exit. You know what I mean? And I just, I get so worried. Uh, when I see that because there's kids and there's things going on that just are totally. Uh, to me illegal in, in other ways, but we have. And I know enforcement's gonna be tough, but we have to figure this out and we will in workshop.
So if it was, if it was a nuisance, you could write in a nuisance provision to it. If they were a licensed entity, then you could treat it similar to a hotel that had multiple infractions and just yank the license.
I think we need to have a nuisance in our, in our. It does affect people, it does.
Well, should we look at areas in town where this is permissible and areas of town that is not?
Where is permissible or not, we mean.
Well, is it, you know, a neighborhood, you know, on the North Berwick line? A great spot for Airbnbs to happen or is it more, you know, more acceptable where typically over the years has been acceptable? Like down on Wells Beach, down on Route One area.
I, I think, um.
I'm just asking a question.
Right, I, I think it has spread out. I mean, I know, you know, people that rent their houses inland.
Yes.
You know, um, you know, and they do it for taxes, you know.
Right.
You know, I, I understand that. But, um, so it's not just at the beach anymore. It's because of, um, it's sort of like a way of paying. Bills for something.
So, uh, Scott, you're, you're thinking of recently potentially restricting, um, short-term rentals to certain.
I'm, I'm asking a question. Is it, is it something that's worthy of discussion?
Something we should explore.
Well, and, and to that end too, the other broader picture now again, just like, you know, you just said, I'm not advocating for policy. I'm just throwing this out there. When we look at the, the bigger picture of what's happening in the country, you've seen large private equity firms buying up, um, single-family homes. There was one town, I can't remember, it was in Arizona, that there was some staggering amount of the homes that were actually owned by private investment firms. Huge baseless corporations.
Jerome.
That was, was it? It's, it was something like, it was something like obscene, like, I can't remember, like 43 or 50% of the town almost. If I recall correctly, I could be wrong on that, so feel free to back check me, but. The, uh, we have to also take that into consideration that, that, that. It could in and of itself create a lot of problems from nuisance standpoint, but not the least of which is. If you have subsequent generations that want to buy in this town and stay here, that grew up here, where's the housing? If we're filling all the houses, if all the housing's getting filled for commercial purposes, you're, you're gonna run people out and that's a big problem too. So I think that needs to be a part of the conversation.
Absolutely.
Well, it certainly would kill the community value, you know, and the, and the hometown feeling, so.
So when do we, do we, would now look at, at some point, would we schedule in the next workshop or?
I get back to you with some suggest, after we can do some of the data work that we need to do, so I can give you a target date.
Okay.
If that would be okay. We'll certainly broadcast that widely once we have that.
And you went to, would you just tell me again about working top?
Yeah, if anybody would like to speak, we have opened to the public. We have it twice at the beginning of the meeting, we have 10 minutes set aside and we will limit to three minutes per person. At the end, we have 10 minutes, three minutes per person. Like I said, any questions, comments or concerns in the interim, feel free to email us. That's, that allows for good back and forth. Um, so that's, that's, uh, we just wanted to point that out, so. And of course, before any of these proposals move forward, the wheels of government turn slow. There will be public hearings on it, so it's, this is, none of these are imminent next week, nothing like that. So there's plenty of time for consideration and conversation in the interim.
Are we at a low in the conversation? Do we want to accept comments at this point or a good few minutes?
It's not on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're absolutely right.
Yeah, it's not on the agenda, so unfortunately we cannot do that.
Yeah, good point.
No, but if, I, does the board have anything else on, um, short-term rentals or any? Oh, okay, well, if, if that's the case, then what we're gonna do is we're gonna take a brief 10-minute recess until the 6 o'clock meeting time. And, uh, yeah, we'll be back at 6:00.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mike.
Eleven point nine, twelve point four, we'll say last year. And I'm gonna spend a little for you. You guys threw some money at tax relief. You guys threw some money at some other special budget line items to the tune of over almost probably two million dollars between the two. So one would have thought your fund balance would have gone from thirteen point four million dollars down to eleven point four million dollars. It didn't. It went down to eleven point nine, you know, million, twelve point four. You know, down to whatever math is, you know, math. It didn't. You know, and it didn't because your revenues, investment earnings, you know, came in higher than projections. You returned as you typically do down in Wells. You know, almost a million dollars of what you budgeted for expenses that you'd ever paid that you rolled over to this next year in twenty five. That was almost a million, over one point five million dollars of revenues coming in more than what you expected. Expenses that didn't go out the end of the door. So that unbalance that you thought was gonna go down by two million really didn't only went down by half a million dollars because of favorable revenue projections over to what you estimated. And spending less money. And as you typically do, you recycle and reappropriate the next year. And I believe this year for the twenty five budget, you threw at tax relief and some other special budget matters was a close two million dollars again, two million dollars, you know. So we like to keep you at that ninety days and you're there and you have that. You know, kinda adding to the conversation, you got over seven million dollars, you know, sitting in capital money for infrastructure, you know, that you're going to, you know, you're gonna be upgrading. You've got some proprietary funds of about, mm, close to another one point eight, one point nine million dollars. New one that you set up was code enforcement and a special fee that you charged out there that you've got banked and set aside in addition to the money that I just told you. You know, about a little less than the twelve million dollars. Set aside, you got like about five hundred thousand in that code enforcement reserve account. Remember, this is as of six thirty twenty four, okay? You've also got a recreation reserve of a little north of seven hundred thousand dollars, you know, and then you have a beach reserve that we have for the fees and all that. And I think that was a little more than a half a million dollars too in there. So what's the moral of the story? You've got other calculated monies that you've put away for some, some needs, you know, here at the Town of Wells that you have access to. You know, and I think that that's, that's good news 'cause when you're running an oceanfront community and you spent in some natural disasters, close to a half a million, six hundred thousand dollars that you haven't been reimbursed for, that we hope we can see that money, you know, at some point in time and you're in the boat with many of your other neighbors, north and south of you. It's nice to have that money there to put your town back together and get your place up and running here right now. And that's what these pockets of money allow you to do, you know, to do exactly. If you didn't, you'd have no other alternative way, you know, to really kinda take care of your, your financial house except to borrow. You know, or, or take from some of these other special reserve funds that you have. And that's the beauty of having general fund balances, you're able to do those things, so. So that's about the highlights for six thirty twenty four. We're getting into six thirty twenty five, you know, here right now with Jody and her crew. We thank Jody and her crew. I mean, it just seems like the, 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 the process, the quality, you know, the conversations. Thank Jody and her staff really for, for making this process, you know, what it is, okay? There were times a while back where it wasn't like that, but Jody and her crew have certainly worked very hard, you know, to get here, to allow me to deliver this information. And you tell your neighbors, and I hope the news, I hope all your neighbors watching the news here tonight. You'll be here right now. Ron Smith, R H S. I hope the news is watching this because I deliver good news to the Town of Wells and this news just doesn't roll this way all the time. I can certainly tell you that. The world of government is ugly, you know, right now, ugliest I've ever seen it in over thirty five years. Here's what I can tell you, it's not ugly in Wells, so.
If I may, I oftentimes, all of those here and those oftentimes watching, hear me compliment Jody and her team, but I wanna take the opportunity with all of you here to do what just, what Ron said. You have run a phenomenal finance department. Nicole, her addition has been great. Your team keeps growing every day and I really appreciate that. You have this town in great financial condition and I thank you personally. Thank you.
Last week didn't roll this way and a couple of meetings and I can tell you next week, there's a couple more that did, that aren't rolling this way either, so.
You can come back anytime, Ron. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming to see me. Any questions here I may answer before I depart.
Yeah, yeah, I've, I've got a couple of questions. But in this year's report, I noticed a lot more attention to O P E B.
OPEB. O P E B.
O P E B.
So here's my quiz back to you.
Could you explain that?
You know what it is?
Other post employment benefits.
I hate acronyms, don't you?
I do as well. It took me a while to define this.
So here's what they say, OPEB, other post employment benefits. So what that mean, non-retirement. So we take the value of life insurance and any other, you know, expenses that you may have and based upon collective bargaining agreements that you required to pay when it's a separation of service or retirement. There's actually an actuary, it's called Tyrone from the state of Maine that hired to compute what those benefits are to the Town of Wells and any other people that offer those benefits, which is typical in the world of government. So the values that you see right there is based upon the information provided by the actuary at the state of Maine for the various benefits that's described in there that you belong to that pool. So we didn't make the numbers up. We just make sure that we get that report from the actuary that the state hires to put that in your report. So those are your numbers.
Uh, next question. Page number nine, there was a post position correction. It went back to twenty twenty three and it's like returned again on page sixty one where it explains it. Yes, let me just find it on page sixty one.
Yeah, there'll be a footnote.
There is. Has, had, it's a billion forty two thousand, uh, five hundred fifty three dollars, fund balance correction. Uh, goes back to, it says ARPA, ARPA grant. Could you, you explain what happened there?
So what happens is, so on December thirty first, two thousand and twenty four, you had the last opportunity to spend or obligate those funds under those ARPA relief money, you know, under the various COVID acts, okay? So what happened is, is those ARPA funds back in two thousand and twenty three, you were allowed to use those for revenue replacements and things like that. Those decisions were made post six thirty twenty three. You actually laterally, you know, applied that back to six thirty twenty three because the law allowed you to do that, okay? Allowed you to go back actually to the period of COVID and do that, to spend those money. That's what that's telling you is we went back based upon your actions here and went back to a previous year and said, hey, the Town of Wells looked in the mirror and said it was going to use those monies for expenses that had already been incurred for the town and that's what that footnote is telling you.
Well, that's, that's the answer to that question.
I gotta go, bye.
Some towns and other entities often have audit committees. What's, what's your experience with audit? I, I would expect that. I remember retiring CPA myself.
So you can appreciate it. So listen, I endorse anything that makes the process better, okay?
And what, I'd just like to know what's your experiences with, is with them and whether or not you think something like that with a town of the size of Wells makes sense.
I think anything that helps the process together, you know, working in a, you know, for lack of better word, a collaboration, not only just with auditors, attorneys, you know, bankers and, you know, certainly brokers or anything like that that can make the process better is your, you know, is an audit committee. Having said that, doing this for thirty to thirty five years, going and finding those qualified members to represent that and be a firewall for this municipality and any other municipalities, I've seen for some counter production in the exercise. So as you move into that area, I'm all for, you know, certainly talking about that. I serve as a liaison to many of these audit committees, working in conjunction with them, you know. So, so I think it's more of what would their value be, okay?
So if we could find the right combination of people to serve as an audit committee, you think it would be, could be?
I think, I think it would be worth a discussion and before you do, I would think before you go find that committee, what's their purpose? What's their charge? Because I see a lot of different purposes for these audit committees, okay? I see audit committees that are part of budgets, I see audit committees that aren't part of budgets. So is that what you want that? If you want, please send me off, you know, Jody or Mike can send me some information. I can send you a lot of guidance, you know, on audit committees or really, you know, answer that question better. I could probably even go up the street here, up Route one, and give you an audit committee for a neighboring municipality. I can go down the street towards Route one, you know, and back down to the border in the hand. Give you an audit committee. There aren't many audit committees in York County, I can tell you that, so.
I, I found that they work best when you have qualified people.
Yep.
Uh, and a lot of the, um, the minutia that you deal with in an audit, little things that maybe the select board might wanna know.
Sure.
Um, an audit committee could filter that.
Well, they're supposed to be an important tool for you and for your management too. So the same question that you asked me, I would ask, have you had that conversation?
No, yeah, I thought I'd ask you first.
And I'm more than interested as you have these conversations to provide you some guidance on, just because some of your neighbors do it, you know, doesn't mean Wells should do it, but also doesn't mean Wells should discount it either, you know. So what, what are you looking for? What, what's the value, okay? What, what are some of the things that it would provide? You know, that they would provide you for guidance and all that? And I'd love to send you some information. That is a big topic, you know, right now, so.
Lastly, you didn't mention your independent auditor's report on internal control, which I find very positive.
Yep.
Could you speak to that?
So a couple of things, we would mention it if you're, are you on page like one, two, three or four?
One fourteen.
Okay, one fourteen, okay, so, so good place. So I thought you might have been on one, two, three or four.
No.
Yeah, you've actually got a letter that basically says, you know what? We could talk about issues about, you know, really, you know, closing out some funds and really trying to get better and progress, you know, on who we are and, and the dynamics of this very complicated community and government that we run and understanding our finances that clearly our finance office understands. There's a letter under separate cover that really commends the Town of Wells. You know, that says, hey, uh, we don't, we didn't find any, you know, of that that would rise to the level of us raising our hands would say, you, you need to change this practice like now, fire, we need to change it. We haven't for really the past couple of years. We've, we've found some housekeeping things, but nothing that would rise to a best practice comment for a significant deficiency, dismissiveness or material weakness, which I'm sure you're referring to.
Yeah, and I think that's very, very positive.
And I'll go back and say what I did.
Yeah.
Hats off, people take care of the finances of the Town of Wells. It does not work that way all the time, I can tell you that, and a lot of your neighbors, so.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
You back next week?
Uh, yeah, no.
Thanks again.
Any other questions of me? Good luck.
Before we move on to the next subject, Rebecca, do you have the, the video feed up in front of you?
I do, yes.
Can, I know we've got some people here, but there's also people at home that wanna see what's going on. Can they see past the cameras?
They can see everything, yeah.
Perfect.
All right, next we have a special presentation to hear an overview of the Southern Maine Energy Navigator Pilot Program is presented by Karina Greater of the Southern Maine Planning and Development Commission. You wanna, are you right there already? Perfect, yeah, you stay right there.
Okay, great. Yeah, thank you all so much for having me here tonight. Um, as you mentioned, I'm Karina Greater. I lead the Sustainability and Resilience Team at Southern Maine Planning and Development Commission. We're a regional organization that supports the Town of Wells and your neighboring communities on all things planning and economic development related. And I'm really excited to share this project with you all because it's been two years in the making in partnership with the towns. Um, as part of our work supporting sustainability and resilience in the region, we've heard from communities like Wells that they really wanna support homeowners and their residents doing their own energy upgrades to reduce energy costs, um, but that the town staff didn't feel like they had the capacity and the resources to create their own separate program. Um, so what we've done is created this pilot program that serves a group of our communities we work with. Um, and we found funding and we, um, you know, created this program and we're really excited to be launching it this spring. Um, so our goal is to help homeowners in the region do energy upgrades in their homes um, by providing both technical assistance and financial assistance to the homeowners. We got an eight hundred thousand dollar grant, um, and five hundred thousand dollars of that is going directly to the residents themselves. And what's great about this grant is there was no match required of the municipality. So no cost to the towns that are participating. And how it works is the communities that are a part of it are Wells, Kittery, Kenny Bonk, Kenny Bonkport and Agunkwit, the communities we've been working with on these issues for about five years now. Um, and homeowners can receive two types of assistance from our energy navigators. So these are full-time fellows who've received energy training to help walk people through the steps from exploring what energy upgrades are of interest to them to navigating the complex incentives that are already out there, um, to helping actually get it done. Um, and so anyone's eligible for the technical assistance and to work with an energy navigator through their particular home and the issues they have. Um, but for folks who are lower moderate income, we are providing that additional financial assistance. And the idea of that is that it will stack on top of assistance that folks can get through the state um, to sort of cover the gap that we've heard is too big for people to cover, especially if folks have to pay money upfront and then wait for a rebate. That's sometimes too hard for folks who have limited monthly funds available. So the way it works is we partnered with York County Community Action Corporation, who already does a lot of the, um, energy assistance in the region. There, for income eligible homeowners, they'll handle the whole process of the energy upgrades. So York County Community Action will provide the contractor and will do all of the, um, the like contracting and project management so that at the end of the day, the homeowner just has to pay their share. There's no like changing of rebates, waiting for rebates to come in, um, waiting for grants, that sort of thing. Um, and so our goal is that for low income homeowners, we will cover entirely a hundred percent the cost of heat pumps or weatherization, so that's air sealing and insulation, by stacking a little bit of extra funding on top of the efficiency main rebates or weatherization assistance program rebates they can already get. Um, and then for moderate income homeowners, um, it will reduce the total project cost for weatherization to just twenty five percent of the cost. Um, or for heat pumps, we can provide homeowners with an additional twenty, two thousand dollars to help cover the purchase and installation costs. Um, so we're really hoping that this will sort of bridge this barrier we've seen, especially for folks who fall just outside of really low income requirements, those people sort of in the missing middle who, you know, make a moderate income through their work, but they just don't have enough to pay for that high upfront cost of these significant upgrades, but could really benefit from saving, um, the energy costs long term. And so what Mike has shared with you all tonight is a memorandum, memorandum of understanding that we've drafted with the towns, um, that just sort of describes how the program is set up and how we've set up these sort of income guidelines and, um, the structure of the program. And it also describes how we'll make decisions about how we'll change that because it is a pilot, so we're testing out, you know, this particular structure and we'll reevaluate so that we make sure that we can help as many people as possible. Um, and then the other thing it does is sort of ask the towns to, um, recognize their role as, you know, helping us with this pilot and evaluating it and also helping us get the word out to community members, so doing community engagement around the program. But beyond that, there's no other commitment to the town, financial or other staff resources wise.
But I just wanted to thank Karina and the whole S M P D C staff. They, again, a work product for two years plus. Um, it's been a wonderful venture and I recognize that I think it fits the board's idea of helping our residents to the level that Karina has talked about. And I, I think we will find many, many benefits for our residents who maybe don't meet the thresholds, uh, or who meet the thresholds. And I think also for Lori Lord and our general assistants, who may be able to also connect people with this program.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Later on in the agenda, you'll have the opportunity, if you so choose to authorize me, to engage in a M O U. Um, so that'll come up later for your endorsement, if you will. You'll have stories to tell when you come back to, back to work tomorrow. Everybody came out for you. Thanks, Karina.
Thank you all so much. Yes, we do have a website, it's energynavigatorme.org.
It will be pushing this information out through Rebecca and our public information office so that it'll be readily available to everyone.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right, folks, so what we went ahead and did, and I'm sure many of you noticed at the beginning of the meeting, we moved up our public comment period just so you folks don't have to sit through our, uh, all our microlicense, everything else approvals. So just, um, what we do is, it's standard at every board meeting, there's ten minutes set aside for open to the public with three minutes apiece. Um, it's typical practice for the board not to answer questions or anything like that where it's not an agenda item. But at this time, we will invite you up to the podium to state your name and speak about any questions, comments, concerns that you may have.
Uh, good evening, my name is Beth Allen, I'm a resident of Wells. I'm here tonight to share my concern about a recent decision made solely by Chief Putnam to enter into a two eighty seven G memorandum of agreement. This is an M O A out, this M O A outlines an expansion of responsibilities to our local law enforcement, um, officers and after they have completed a training. This expansion of duties is a town matter that warrants oversight from town management, including the select board and the town manager. Chief Putnam signed the M O A without town manager review or without select board discussion. In public remarks, Chief Putnam has stated two eighty seven G M O A is simply a training. Public, publicly available communication between the chief and the Department of Homeland Security officials make it clear that the M O A is not simply a training. Many public comments made by town managers and police chiefs across our state have also reinforced this. The Maine Municipal Association describes this program this way. Quote, "Under current Maine law, municipal law enforcement at the discretion and financial support of their legislative bodies," for that, this would be our residents, "may receive training to support duties and expanded duties under the two eighty seven G program." "Whilst taxpayers pay for the policing activities outlined transparently by our police department, all contracts and agreements that town departments enter into should be thoroughly reviewed and approved by the town manager and the select board." "The lack of oversight regarding this agreement is particularly concerning given the significant liability that local law enforcement officers and departments take in entering into these agreements in particular. This agreement, which was signed by Chief Putnam without town manager review or select board discussion, opens the Town of Wells to a significant financial risk. I ask tonight that the town manager and the select board fulfill your duties on this matter and complete a full legal review of the M O A, have a transparent discussion regarding the liability that the town has now been taking on, and thoroughly review the costs to taxpayers that we've, has been agreed upon without our oversight or opinions." Thank you.
Hello, my name is Robert Lavoy, uh, former owner of a hospitality business in town, now retired. I have two concerns that I'd like to express about this issue. One is reputational risk involved in participating in a program like this, you know. Those of us in the hospitality business have worked long and hard, in some cases for generations, to build Wells's reputation as a friendly and welcoming town and that could go, all go away in a flash if something goes wrong in one of these deportation-related incidents. The other thing that concerns me, it's as a taxpayer, about the potential liability that we are assuming. Here we are just three and a half months into the current, um, administration and their implementation of their deportation plans. And according to the A C L U, there are already over eight hundred civil cases filed against various levels of government related to these deportations. These lawsuits are coming and if we're participating in this, we may be a target, which I think is totally inappropriate.
My name is Mara Kelly, I'm also a full-time resident and I'm talking on the same subject. First, I wanna say Wells is a great town, I love it. And I love it because it is the friendliest and most welcoming town. All the town officials I've dealt with, every office, have, have proven that. And I'd like it to stay that way. Um, I thought about this a lot, I did my research, I listened to the last select board meeting. I went to a meeting where Chief Putnam and Captain Chabot discussed it and it was presented as a training. It's not just a training. I read the M O U, I read the website, it's a ten-page document. I've been to lots of trainings, you don't have to fill out a ten-page contract to go to a training. It, the title is delegation of immigration authority. That itself is a clue that this is more than a training. It lays out the town's financial responsibilities, other people have talked about that. I really am concerned about lawsuits and associated costs. If we look around the country, ICE's actions have fomented so much upheaval, so many lawsuits. And the courts are finding time after time that ICE has acted in unlawful ways. Courts may intervene and throw out the warrants, but in the meantime, people's lives have been completely disrupted, they've been deported, um, and, uh, imprisoned without due process. Um, I am certain that no one here in Wells, especially a police officer, wants to be put in that position of, of supporting this and of participating in such actions. My final point is that we've never seen such stress in our democracy since the Civil War and that period. We are in a similar situation to people in Europe before World War Two. It's critical that our government officials, you, um, really think about the big picture and not make a decision in a vacuum. And I think it's so important that you look at the big picture, do it as right. It takes strength of character to step back and look and it's not a weakness. And I really ask that you help us stay the friendliest, most welcoming town in Maine. And if we do partner with ICE, I don't think that can happen, we can't be both. Thank you.
Good evening, my name's John Stanton, I'm a resident of Wells. Thank you, board, for having us tonight. The two thousand and twenty six police staffing request is for three new sworn officer positions to supplement their current staffing levels. The current training challenges and opportunities noted in the request, training and joint operations at the police training facilities here in Wells at the York County Community College have been limited and underutilized. Also noted, we are experiencing a one hundred and thirty percent increase in mental health-related calls, but have been unable to move forward on establishing a training and support partnership for, for our officers with the nationally accredited partner, Sweetser. Not noted in the request is the proposed collaboration between the Wells Police Department and ICE Enforcement and Removal Operations, which mandate that every Wells police officer must undergo a minimum forty hours of training in how to administer, administer their removal program. We should make no mistake, ICE Enforcement and Removal Training is about detain and deport, not skills or professional development training. Let's support our officers by facilitating their professional skills, techniques and procedures training right here at the state-of-the-art York County Community College Law Enforcement Training Program. We need to support our officers by redoubling our efforts to get them the Sweetser, Sweetser training they deserve to help both themselves and our, the vulnerable in our community. The officers of the Wells Police Department are already fully empowered to detain and arrest anyone they suspect of having committed a crime. We need to let ICE do their job. Let's help our officers with the professional training they truly deserve. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Nancy Ford and I'm a resident of Wells. I hope everybody who speaks tonight will also be a resident of Wells. Uh, over the last few weeks, we've seen an enormous number of demonstrations and so forth against the decision by Chief Putnam to apply for our officers to be trained in ICE, by ICE, so that they can accomplish their duty to deliver them to a detention center if they encounter them while they are performing their regular duties. With regard to that, approximately fifty residents of Wells came together and decided that they would issue a letter, which was delivered to Chief Putnam yesterday, in support of her her decision and in support of our police department. I'd like to read that. It's very short. "To Police Chief Joanne Putnam and members of the Wells Police Department, we, the undersigned, fully support the Wells Department's proactive decision to enter into a training alliance with federal ICE authorities to ensure our officers are fully prepared to address immigration issues should they arise in the performance of their normal duties. This is in preparation so that we don't make mistakes." That is not in the letter. "We take comfort and pride in the initiative and leadership demonstrated by Wells among Maine town police departments. The quality and life of Wells is very important to us. The continuing excellence and professionalism demonstrated by the Wells Police Department is a very much appreciated part of the quality of life in Wells. Thank you for your dedication to serve and protect the people of the town of Wells, both residents and visitors. We cannot maintain a family-friendly character in Wells if it is not safe. And that means safe for all of us and safe for our police officers so they know how to handle issues should they arrive. Thank you very much."
Hello. My name is Holly Russell. I am a resident. I'd like to speak to the agreement between the Wells Police Department and Immigration and Customs Enforcement called the 287G Agreement. As constituents, and I'm speaking on behalf of friends and family, as voters who have always supported the growth of our police department, as parents choosing to raise our children here, our concerns about this agreement have not yet been assuaged. So thank you for listening. I have trusted our town officials and our police department to make choices that are in our best interests. I have always felt safe in my town, and again, I am thankful for your work. I am afraid that the decision to become the fist of a federal operation accused of failing to recognize due process may begin to erode that trust among voters in this town. As MLK Jr. said, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." And similarly, when due process is undermined for some, it is undermined for all. When our system of checks and balances deteriorates, we are all at risk, and our courts agree. In numerous cases, immigration enforcement has been found to violate constitutional rights, which has led to costly legal settlements. If Wells uses its local police and our community resources to enforce federal immigration laws, the town risks costly litigation. It is it also risks undermining public safety as we shift away from addressing our real needs. And and this is also asserted by the Major Cities Chiefs Association, which says that assigning police officers to enforce routine civil immigration laws can erode the trust in cooperation built with immigrant communities, which are essential for effective, community-oriented policing. Wells has agreed to detain and transport people it believes to be non-citizens who are arrested for alleged civil immigration violations without any limitations, an enormous use of local resources for federal enforcement. Just a few weeks ago, the towns of Monmouth and Winslow rescinded their joint application to enter into an agreement with ICE due to these concerns. They are the only other community in the state that expressed interest. We hope Wells will terminate its own contract. Thank you.
Hi. My name's Kat Curly, and I'm a resident of Wells. I don't want to say the same thing everybody else said. You guys have heard it all. What I do want to say is I think any tool that we can give our officers is another tool to put on their tool belt. I think training is just helping them and equipping them for just road safety. And they're making a stop, and they're getting ready, just like Ms. Forbes said. I think it's just helping them to make those stops and make a decision. Something I do want to add, and I do want to read it because I start stumbling, is and I'm very confident in this, is, sorry, let me just read it. I trust this and believe that this agency, the Wells Police Department, sorry, 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 sorry. I lost my spot, and now I'm getting a little nervous here.
Okay, don't get nervous.
Uh, here we go. Here we go. I feel very confident in saying that I believe without a doubt that any training provided to this agency wouldn't be abused, wouldn't be abused or used incorrectly, because the ethics and the morals of our Wells Police has proven that. And I really believe that. I thought a lot about that today. Our police department has really proven themselves. And if you live in this town, you know that. This is a great town, and they deserve all the training they can have. And they deserve that in any scenario they come to. I hope that we can back them. I think that as this town has grown, I think it's fair in asking all the right questions. Unfortunately, what will what will be blurred for our officers without this training is the situations that they can potentially find themselves in. I loved moving here 10 years ago to Wells, but with the town expanding as it has, crime has really changed the dynamic. I just feel like all the crime that's come in and the different changes that have happened in this town as it's growing, we need to keep in mind that that's changing our officers. They're they're facing different things every day on the road. So I just, thank you very much.
We just, I have to do something procedurally. We're a little over the 10 minutes. I just wanted to refer back to the board. Do we want to extend the time period out with public comment?
Yeah.
Okay.
Throw another six, seven minutes.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Hi. My name's Jana Campagna, and I am a resident of Wells. I'm here today because I want to express concerns about the 287G agreement that's been signed between the Wells Police Department and the Customs Enforcement, the Immigration and Customs Enforcement Agency. Community and police safety are paramount. That's not the question here. But this program actually carries significant risks and potential costs, and we just can't ignore them. The history of 287G is troubling. It was marked by a number of civil rights violations and legal suits. That led to the task force model being shut down in 2012. So it was only reopened in 2025. So can we, as a town, really be a part and feel comfortable endorsing a program that was shut down because of all the civil rights violations? Beyond the ethics, there are financial realities here. Training may be free, but the resource costs are real. One municipality incurred over a quarter of a million dollars in unexpected costs by signing up for one of these agreements. So can Wells afford such a risk, especially with uncertain benefits? Furthermore, the program's recent restart in 2025 means that we lack sufficient data to assess the current effectiveness and implementation by the new ICE leadership. We've committed to something with limited scope for evaluation. Even if you go onto the frequently into the ICE webpage, their Frequently Asked Questions section is completely empty. There's only one page available for the public. The Tenth Amendment, to discuss whether or not our officers are required to do this, the Tenth Amendment protects our choice to participate in such federal programs around law enforcement. Yet federal pressure against sanctuary cities complicates this, raising the issue that we may face lawsuits from all sides of this issue if we participate here. We can see that already with requests from the ACLU. Therefore, what I want to do is urge our leaders to proceed with caution. At minimum, let's pause and have a full legal review of this agreement that's been signed and what its full implications are for our town. Thank you.
I'm Bishop Rosemary Annas. I've lived in this town for 40 years and for 20 years was the pastor of St. Francis of Assisi Old Catholic Faith Community. I didn't know I was going to speak today, but my faith has propelled me up here. I would have won my clerical gob for a little more impact had I had I known. I don't have statistics. I don't have any legalese written down. I just believe that while I'm here to express my strong opposition to the police department collaborating with an agency, that everything I've seen, everything I've read about operates in ways that are immoral, inhumane, unconstitutional, illegal, just plain sloppy and cruel. My faith tells me that the alien is also my neighbor, and I want to treat them as such and would be embarrassed, at the very least, to see the community that I love in any kind of collusion with an agency that treats human beings the way I have watched them do so. I pray that this community maintains its dignity by saying no to things that are unconstitutional, illegal, and immoral. I pray for us all. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Hello. My name is Daria Cullen, and I am a resident. And I don't want to repeat what everyone else has said. And I did want to also, to your comment about the police, the Wells Police Department's professionalism, I have experienced that myself, and I 100% agree. And I'm not here, just so we're clear, to criticize our police department. In fact, I've heard only positive things about Chief Putnam and her leadership. What I am opposed to is our police department becoming and being deputized by ICE. And if you're here tonight, for everyone that's here, I would love everybody just to raise their hand if they also agree that we should not be affiliated with ICE. That's a lot of people. This partnership is really dividing us, and it's causing real harm. It undermines community policing and trust. It's an approach that will likely discourage community members from engaging with the police because of their ICE affiliation, potentially hindering regular police work, which I don't think anyone's really been thinking about. And the other thing I'm not hearing tonight, other than the Reverend who spoke, it's really increasing fear among asylum-seeking families and new mainers that we have here and the organizations that support them, such as York County Community Action Corps, Maine Immigrants Rights Coalition, and the Immigrant Legal Advocacy Project. These groups are already overwhelmed, and now they must also support families too afraid to even
They haven't done nothing.
To even send
They've actually sold the city out.
Hang on. I'm just going to finish my comment, please, and then
ICE sold away. You need to support them.
To send
A bunch of illegal aliens running around.
We gotta, we gotta respect everybody.
I respect, you know, right now.
Okay.
You know what the hell they're doing.
I'm just going to finish my comment, and then we'll go.
Kill them and every damn thing else. And you're going to sit here talking about you don't want to support them?
Sir, we gotta, we gotta just make sure that everybody has their chance to speak.
You're going to hear that, too.
All right. I'm just going to finish this comment, and then if you want to come up.
Can you pause, sir?
You don't even know who your neighbors are.
Do you want to come up and speak?
You have to give her a chance to speak.
Damn, illegals in here taking over the whole damn state, and you sitting here talking about supporting them.
Sir, it's, it's, it's a procedural thing with, this is
Damn City-Gone-Brook behind them, damn people. You're sitting here playing like you support them, and we should show up about it.
Sir, sir, no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not
It's okay. It's intended to disrupt.
You're invited up to the podium, ma'am. You're going to have your time back.
The police chief should be giving a medal.
Well, for us, it's, it's not about whether we disagree or agree with it. We need to make sure that everybody in this room has afforded the same opportunity to express their opinion.
You supporting them out here raping kids and everything else, and you're sitting here all that up and silent seekers, silent seekers, why you know what.
And we're going to go ahead and reset your time. And if you want to start over, we're going to make sure that you have your opportunity to go ahead and say what you'd like to say.
I appreciate that. I think, I don't think anyone here agrees. What I don't want to continue is that narrative that we have rapists and murderers going around or that our police departments, excuse me?
Oh, folks, folks, hold on a minute. Hang on, hang on.
Okay. Everyone who wants to talk, please come stand up, because I'm going to finish my comments.
Hold on. Listen, we know that this is a contentious issue, folks. We know that. But we talk about division. We talk about coming together and having conversations, but we can't even do it in this room. Everybody in here has a right to speak, whether they agree with you or not, okay? And we're offered a real opportunity here, okay? Because we're the ones that you're talking to right here. But the change and the problem in this country isn't that the people sitting at this side of the table aren't listening. It's the people that are sitting out here aren't listening and talking, genuinely talking in a, in a, an honest sense with one another. I would encourage everybody here to just listen. And if you have something that you want to talk to somebody about in a respectful fashion, you should follow up on that. But as long as we're in this room and I'm running this meeting, whether I agree or disagree with somebody at that podium is completely irrelevant to me. You are going to be allowed your time, and that's the end of it. If some, if I have to call someone out of order, I don't want to. I want you to have your opportunity, but I will do that. I take that seriously. That is a commitment that I've made to this town. Ma'am, I'm going to restart your time.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah, I'm going to stay where I was here and just reiterate that the fear among asylum seekers, whether you agree, whether they should be here or not, they're here. We have new mainers. We have people going through the immigration process, and they're human beings just like you. And they deserve and they have a right to be here, okay? They're going through the process. They have a legal right, yes, they do, in the United States, to be here. And what we don't realize is that these types of agreements with ICE and some of these affiliations are really causing a lot of stress. There are children who their parents don't want to send them to school because they're afraid their kids are going to come home to no parents. And if you've never experienced coming home to no parents, I can tell you it's a very traumatic event. So I think we really need to be thinking about the situation from a human impact as well, not just the financial piece of it, which this is going to cause unbudgeted costs and liabilities for Wells. But in addition, it's really causing a lot of panic and stress among these families, and they don't deserve that. They're just like us, you know, looking for a better life and wanting to live in safe communities, too. We have a father who just got picked up from ICE last month. He's the father of seven children, and he had to leave his wife and seven kids behind, and they don't know where he is to this day. He is somewhere between Massachusetts and New Mexico. I mean, could you imagine having to explain that to your children? Could you imagine not being able to say, I don't, or to say you don't know where your dad is or where their dad is? This 287 agreement is really effectively turning our local officers into ICE agents, which is outside their core responsibilities. This partnership wastes taxpayer dollars, and it spreads misinformation and adds a burden to a department that already does good work. They don't need this. And importantly, local police can detain and transfer people with judicial criminal warrants. Immigration status isn't a barrier, and that's a, that's a big piece of misinformation that keeps getting around. And under Maine law, they do, they can make these stops. So I don't know why they keep saying that their officers are waiting on the side of the road or that they're letting people run, run around rampant when it's just not a fact. This agreement also hurts our local economy. Wells relies heavily on immigrant labor during tourist season, but workers are fearful of deportation, and many are deciding to stay away. And local businesses are going to suffer as a result. And even though they may not be feeling the pain right now, come July and August, they will be. So why is Wells the only town out of nearly 500 towns in Maine to sign this agreement? Why is it so crucial for us, but no other town in the community or community in the state? There are nearly, there are just really simply no benefits to this agreement, only, like I said earlier, unbudgeted costs and liabilities. And I urge you to please reconsider this decision, or as was mentioned before, to at least have some better oversight, have a lawyer look at it. Let's have a real legal review and a real discussion about it, not just have somebody make a decision for the entire community. You know, I think we really need to start choosing policies and build trust and unity and not fear and division, and keep pushing these narratives that are just horrible and deplorable. Thank you.
We said seven minutes. It's 6:42. It's now 6:55. Do we want to extend the time, or do we want to?
Just do one more.
There's one more.
One more, and then we'll
As long as the whole board's all set with that.
I'm fine continuing. There are some folks here that are here on a different matter that I think would like to have the opportunity to speak as well, and I don't want to shut them out. I'm assuming that they're sitting because they want to give everybody else a chance, but I don't know if we can divide the open to the public and give them their opportunity afterwards.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna refer back to the board on this and how you want to handle that, what your opinion is. Would you like to ask if anybody's here for anything other than the agreement, to see if they, they would like to stand up and speak at this time? We do also, just as a note for everybody, we do have an open to the public at the end of the meeting. Same thing. So if you missed this one, there is the next one as well.
Why don't we send for at least three people to speak on a topic other than this one? I'm making this
How does the board feel about that?
No.
Okay. So just, we're gonna, if you would like, guys, what is it that you'd like to speak about? speak about?
The ICE issue and support our police.
So just to show a hands, who, who had something that was unrelated to the ICE agreement that they would like to speak about at public comment period? Anybody? Just a, just a show of hands? All right. If we could have this gentleman. Okay. Sorry.
I'm waiting.
Which one? Who did?
You guys gonna open it up to other stuff?
Who waited?
It's called the lodging license.
Yeah. Yeah, we're gonna do three people right now, and there's another one at the end of the meeting. Somebody over here's been waiting. Was that what I told? Somebody had their hand up over here. I didn't see. I'm sorry. Was it you?
Yep.
All right.
Who? Yeah, okay. We'll let her go. Yep.
Hi. Bonnie Hep Tig, longtime Wells resident and business owner here in Wells. And I'd just like people to know, there's other viewpoints out there. I'm a member of the silent majority, and we voted to have the illegal mess all around the country and locally cleaned up. So I support Chief Putnam, the Wells Police, the Wells Selectmen, the federal agencies, anybody that wants to help do that, and if they think they need training to do that and do it appropria-, appropriately, that's wonderful. We support you. We thank you for your leadership role. You know, maybe Wells was the first, and hopefully they won't be the only and the last. Let's not forget all the victims the illegal invasion has, has wrought on people's lives. Illegal. Illegal from the start. That's a crime. So wherever they encounter crime, I would like it cleaned up. I love France. I can't just go and live in France. It's illegal. So I support them. I just want people to know that, you know, we might be the majority.
All right, Mr. Howard.
I'm not here for that. I'm not here for another article on the list.
What does it say again? I'm sorry. I can't hear you, Bucky.
I'm here for a separate article on the list. I'm not here for-
Is it for, is it for open to the public? Did you have a comment that was in general, or is it, are you here for an actual agenda item?
An actual agenda.
All right. Well, yeah, okay. Mr. Tleavy.
Jason Tleavy, CV Campground. So I'm here just to make a comment on the proposed increase to the lodging license fee. Obviously, I'm opposed. Most of the people I've talked to in town are very opposed. The fee is an astronomical increase, especially for campgrounds. I think it would put our fee over the cost of our property taxes. I don't think the license fee is where you collect that kind of revenue to do the things you want to do. I understand the town probably is facing a shortfall, looking for more revenue. Every town is. Every business is. We're all looking for more revenue, and we don't want to really tax our customers to do so. I don't really think it's very fair. I don't know. You guys workshopped it. Maybe more stuff came out of that, but our opinion, opinion of MTA, the opinion of McCullough, it's a statewide issue. It might seem like a town issue, but this type of stuff creates waves and percolates through our tourism industry, which is kind of what we rely on, and a little more back and forth, a little more open policy, something not so egregious would probably be swallowed a little easier from our end of the industry. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yep. Tim, did you see somebody's-
I'm here for a different agenda item.
Was there anybody else that wanted, because we had those workshops beginning, too. There are other agendas. Was anybody else that wanted to speak about something other than the ICE agreement at this time? Okay. Board, do we want to go through our business and then move on to the second public comment period afterwards? How does everybody feel? Okay. So folks, again, we're going to have a second public comment period after we get through our town business. We welcome you to speak at that time if you'd like to stick around.
Thanks for the effort.
See.
I know. That's why we gotta fight back. Hold fifty-nine and that job.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I wish I were.
You don't need to know. What's your name?
I'm Alex. Are you a Wells resident?
Hi.
Hi. Oh, hi.
Are you all leaving for the night?
We're all leaving.
You're leaving for the night?
Yeah.
I might leave, too. I just-
We're doing weird things we're doing here.
Yeah.
But we're not-
Yeah.
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 I guess so.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
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 No.
Yeah.
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 All right, folks, we're gonna get settled back in so we can get through some of the town business that we have on hand this evening. The first of which is going to be municipal officers workshop business public hearings. The first of which is an informational public hearing on the FY26 municipal budget and warrant articles. So I see we have Jody here in mind.
Yeah, so I just wanted to again acknowledge all the good work of the Budget Review Committee. All, Budget Review Committee over a series, I believe, of six meetings, two select board liaisons to that, the reconciliation meeting. And during the course of the budget review process, the Budget Committee actually recommended increases in the budgets that the department heads and myself proposed. Kudos to department heads, and again, to Jody for the good work on this. We'll walk through this somewhat quickly, but I know this is our third, I believe, public hearing on this. Many of you as residents should have received this booklet. They're available downstairs as you leave, if you'd like, as well. Pretty good explanatory about the process and all of the backup data to the proposed budget that you'll be asked to vote on in June. Jody, you want to lead us through?
Sure. So throughout the budget process, the Budget Committee worked diligently to try and bring a tax amount to the public that would be reasonable. All our projections are only based on picking up a small percentage of value. We try and be conservative when we estimate our tax rate, hoping that the assessor may pick up more value than what we're estimating, but we did go with a low value just in case. But throughout the process, we did pick up a lot, about 10.5% more in non-tax revenues. They ranged from increases that we expect in excise tax from automobiles, interest earned, tree growth reimbursement from the state, our solar lease that we have. We looked at probably, we expect increases in the demolition costs at the transfer station, bait locker and public hoist, ICE sales, and then local road assistance reimbursement. And then, one of the important things to note, we did an exercise. We always look at LD1. So in the past, we had an LD1 tax cap. That is, that the town could only grow our budget by so much of a percentage based on some calculations and numbers from the state. Back in August of 2024, that law was repealed, but we went through that exercise to make sure that we were still falling under LD1. If we had to follow the LD1 tax cap, the budget that we have on the table is still under that number.
Pick up staff changes. Proposed staff changes includes a public works equipment operator. We have proposed that that position will start in October, recognizing if we get voter approval, it will take two to three months to hire someone. So we've budgeted for really three quarters of a year with an October start date. Three patrol officers, and I asked that people read very carefully the backup data that the chief and captains both provided in our book, and it will clearly detail what those assignments are, and that is to aid the SRO, it's to aid in community policing efforts. And so I just want to make sure there's not a misnomer that it is any way tied to the agreement we're hearing about. And that's not a commentary on that whatsoever. I just, that all came out in the budget proposal well before anything about this agreement was even considered. A labor and employee relations manager, and what that is, and again, it's all in the backup data, it's a, really someone in our HR department to help with labor contracts, our employee relations. The complexities of the HR role have become increasingly challenging. So many different federal and state laws that have come down. We are currently using a consultant for that role, and by the consultant's admission and in collaboration with her, she says, "I just can't keep up with your community and others that she contracts to." And we think with our growing staff and the complexities of those responsibilities in that department, that this is a very needed position. And then one part-time recreation program assistant, which comes out of the program recreation enterprise account. Do you want to get from there?
Sure. Still on staffing, we currently have four union contracts that are valid through June 30th of 2026. So the department's salary budgets reflect contract wages and longevity step increases. Throughout this process, we had, I, I want to say we had at least forty-something step increases that we have incorporated in this budget. That does look good on us. It says that our people are staying here, and that's why we're having all these adjustments.
Yeah, I think, I just really want to comment quickly on that. Very, very few communities would look at 42 step increases, a community of our size, and it does reflect on the fact that people come here, they stay here, they embrace the culture that we have as a workforce, and I think that's a credit not only to the workforce, but to the entire community. And that institutional knowledge, if it turns over frequently, you can't replace it. There's a huge cost to replacing it. So those step increases, they're typically built into a collective bargaining agreement in these four cases, or these four union cases, is something really worthy of spending some money on to keep really qualified people here in the institutional knowledge they provide us.
And then we also, we have health insurance that we offer all our staff, so we've built in an adjustment anticipating increases in those. And then this budget also focuses on, there are some lines that have significant increases in the operating side. There are over $5,000 increases. One of them is the quarterly payment that we are currently making to WEMS. We anticipate increases in dispatch and the operating supplies. The fire department had some increases in their vehicle line, turnout gear, and medical. We had an increase in the information center, the amount of funding that we provide to them. We saw increases in our property and casualty insurance, in our IT maintenance. Under the Parks and Rec, it was in their field maintenance. Our police department, we expect increases in vehicle replacement, agreements and contracts, repair and maintenance of equipment. At the public safety facility, we're looking at increases in the building line. Public Works had increases in their repair and maintenance of equipment, building repair and maintenance, storm repair, townwide building maintenance, their hired equipment, snow and ice removal line. The transfer station had increases for demolition disposal, MSW or trash disposal, single-source recycling expense, paper disposal, and they're bringing in a food waste diversion program in 2026 budget. The town manager saw increases in the legal services lines, a consultant line, and event support. And then we saw increases in townwide utilities, which is the townwide fiber, the traffic light repair and maintenance, and hydrant rental.
Much, go ahead, Matt.
Sure. All right. And then, so we heard earlier about Ron talking about us using our general fund balance to help offset taxation. In the FY26 budget, we're looking to use approximately 1.5 million towards that.
For capital items, and this kind of brings us toward the conclusion, for items greater than $25,000, we're looking at replacing the animal control officer vehicle, and we earn a partnership with the town of Agunkwit, where we are providing ACO services for a fee, which is a respectable fee that they're paying us to utilize our services there. Conservation for landback, land bank funding. I believe this year was $300,000. That has been earmarked to help to acquire conservation land. Public Works paving projects. I'm always happy to hear our neighboring communities talk about. You can tell when you come to Wells, the roads are smooth versus some of our neighbors, not so much. Public Works drainage programs, which again, help to preserve our roads. The fire department for a future truck purchase, which will likely be a couple of years out, but we have to be visioning for the purchase of that now, because trucks are two to three years out now to acquire. Ballistic vest for firefighters that may go into a critical incident, where there could be the potential for edged weapons or firearms, so we can protect them. Extrication and rescue equipment, lifeguard services for EMS, a UTV, which is a vehicle that can go in a lot of terrain, different areas. A forestry four-wheel vehicle, we're seeing increased forest fires and challenges within our forest areas, so that would provide them greater access and the ability to also extract someone that may be found injured inside a forested area. A storage building within the harbor with the police department, IT projects, so that's information technology projects and hardware. In public works, a series of equipment replacements, in recreation field repairs and irrigation, a mower replacement, and playground equipment, and under our Wells Emergency Medical Service, an ambulance reserve, and a command slash service vehicle, as well as some upgrades to our communications within WEMS.
And then, also in the book that you get, we do talk about the Recreation Beach and Code Planning Enterprise. Those are just information only, but we do disclose that information. But just a reminder, the enterprise accounts, your taxation dollars do not go into the enterprise accounts. The purpose of the enterprise account is the revenue that comes in. It will pay for all the staffing and expenses within those.
That's kind of a quick summary.
Well, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, this is a public hearing, so would anybody from the public like to speak at this informational portion for the FY26 municipal budget and warrant articles? If you would, we invite you to come up to the podium, state your name. This time, we'll open it up for that, if anybody's interested in speaking. Seeing none?
I move to close the public hearing.
One second. All is in favor? Five zero. Next, we have Lucky Dog Tasting Room LLC, DBA Bats and River Brewing and Distillery, 73 Mile Road, Wells, application for a full-time beer, wine, and spirit liquor license. Would anybody from the public like to speak on this? Seeing none?
I move to close the public hearing and grant the license.
Second, all is in favor? Five zero. What's that?
Next, we have 2020 Distilling LLC, DBA Wild Bevy Distilling LLC, 596 North Burwick
Road, Wells, application for a full-time beer, wine, and spirits liquor license. Would anybody from the public like to speak on this? Seeing none?
I move to close the public-
I move to close the public hearing and grant the license.
Second, all those in favor? Five zero. Next, we have 2020 Distilling LLC, DBA Wild Bevy Distilling LLC, 596 North Burick Road Wells, application for a special entertainment permit. Would anybody like to speak on this? Seeing none?
I move to close the public hearing and grant the license.
Second, all those in favor? Five zero. Next, we have Robert D. Calioris, DBA Litchfields Bar and Grill, 2135 Post Road Wells, application for a full-time beer, wine, and spirit liquor license. Would anybody like to speak on this? Seeing none?
I move to close the public hearing and grant the license.
Second, all those in favor? Five zero. Next, we have Robert D. Calioris, DBA Litchfields Bar and Grill, 2135 Post Road Wells, application for a special entertainment permit. Would anybody like to speak on this? Seeing none?
I move to close the public hearing and grant the license.
Second, all those in favor? Five zero. Next, we have The Steak Co., Inc., DBA The Steakhouse, 1205 Post Road Wells, application for a full-time beer, wine, and spirits liquor license. Would anybody like to speak on this?
I move to close the public hearing and grant the license.
Second, all those in favor? Five zero. Next, we have Lafayette Wells, Inc., DBA Forbes Seafood Restaurant, 427 Mile Road Wells, application for a full-time beer, wine, and spirit liquor license. Would anybody like to speak on this? Seeing none?
I move to close the public hearing and grant the license.
Second, all those in favor? Five zero. Next, we have Campfire Restaurant Group LLC, DBA Maryland Farm Cafe, 557 Coles Hill Road Wells, application for a full-time beer and wine, yeah, beer and wine liquor license. Would anybody like to speak on this? Seeing none?
I move to close the public hearing and grant the license.
Second, all those in favor? Five zero. Next, we have American Cribbage Congress and Wells Senior Center, 300 Post Road Wells, application for a blanket letter of approval to operate a game of chance. Would anybody from the public like to speak on this? Seeing none?
I move to close the public hearing and grant the license.
Second, all those in favor?
Abstaining.
So four zero with one abstention. Next, we have Jason Liddick, hers, I thought that, I think that's supposed to be Luded, isn't it?
Yeah.
We'll replace that I with a U. Jason Luded, DBA Captain Luded Charters, 226 Atlantic Ave, Wells, application for a commercial recreation business license. Would anybody like to speak on this? Seeing none?
I move to close the public hearing and grant the license.
Second, all those in favor? Five zero. Next, we have Nicholas Bodrew, DBA Captain Nick Fishing Charters, 115 West Grand Ave, Old Orchard Beach, Maine, application for a commercial recreation business license. Would anybody like to speak on this? Seeing none?
I move to close the public hearing and grant the license.
Second, all those in favor? Five zero. Next, we have Seacoast Detailing LLC, DBA Seacoast Detailing LLC, 1638 Post Road Wells, application for a mass gathering permit for a car show to be held on September 20th, 2025. Would anybody from the public like to speak on this?
Yes.
All right.
So I'm a neighbor of the location where the car show is held, and the car show has always been a great neighbor, the business, the Seacoast Detailing is a great addition to the community. He's always tried to play by the rules, I'm a neighbor on either side of them, I have no complaints. I think there's another neighbor that complains about everything, but just want to have a car show for a few hours on a Saturday morning, once a year, in September. So really, no disruption. So I'd like to see the car show move forward.
Thank you.
Would anybody else from the public like to speak on this at this time? Seeing none?
I move to close the public hearing and grant the license.
Second, all those in favor? Five zero. Next, we have Daniel Durgan, DBA Seaguard Charters, 17 Clifford Lane Wells, application for a commercial recreation business license. Would anybody like to speak on this? Seeing none?
I move to close the public hearing and grant the license.
Second, all those in favor? Five zero. Great. Well, all right, Mike, we're moving on to good news now. Does anybody have some good news they'd like to share?
Mike will offer, Mike will offer a little bit of quick good news, and it sounds a little bit like a broken record, but I do want to go back to our finance department. This time, I'm not going to focus on Jody, but our wonderful colleagues that are working what I'll call the frontline in the Beach Pass Express, which is a trailer out back, and believe it or not, that has worked extremely well. I'll relate a story, I walked into the lobby out of my office, so into the area outside the town clerk's office, and there was a lady just a tad older perhaps than I am, and she was doing this, and I asked if I could help her, and she said, "Yeah, I want to buy a beach pass, a beach pass only." Walked her out to Beach Pass Express, and off we went, and she came out in three minutes. And she said, "Last year, I spent two hours standing in line." She was the happiest person ever, so that was really heartwarming. The folks on the front line, right now, they're collecting taxes, beach passes, they are handling some, we tried to divert people out to the Beach Pass Express, transfer station stickers, and most importantly, the new registration plates that are happening now. Where you come in, if you have a chickadee plate, you have to get a new plate. It's very time consuming. We've had people who have expressed their anger at the state, doing this effort of changing the plates, et cetera, and that anger is being transferred over onto our staff. And I would just ask people to be really patient and recognize that's not something that our staff is forcing, it's something they're having to exercise doing that duty. And please don't give the brunt of your unhappiness on them. We had an incident last week, and a couple was in line and witnessed a gentleman who was expressing his anger, and he left, he got whatever he needed. Those folks went to a local florist and bought flowers for the front office staff, just to say thank you for what you put up with. And so, just take a pause and know they're really just the messengers doing a really good job, and so, kudos to them, and that is good news, because I think it's important to recognize them, so thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Does anybody else have some good news that they'd like to share? Anybody on the board?
Today, and it's probably pretty appropriate at the schools, that it's Teacher Appreciation Week, because today, they came out with a national report that ranked Wells eighth in the state, but even better news, we've never beat Kenny Buck, and we beat both Kenny Buck and York, we're number one in York County this year as a, the whole district came in number one in York County as a community school district, so that was.
I would say the administration teachers all got A's, and you guys know my new role is facilitator. The facility's got a B, I was pretty, I was going to say pissed by Miles, angry. But it's the first B I've ever gotten, to be honest with you, so I'm pretty excited.
Well, it's real good news. Thank you, Tim.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have anything they'd like to share? All right, well, moving on, we have current agenda items, the first of which is review and action on accounts payable and payroll warrants. Any discussion?
I move to approve and sign the warrant dated May 6, 2025, in the amount of $1,778,285.84. And the general assistance warrant dated May 6, 2025, in the amount of $273.12.
Second. I am going to go ahead and abstain on this one, just so everybody knows. But all those in favor? Four, zero with one abstention. Yeah, I think I have a couple of $18 checks on there to accompany that I have interest in, so. All right. Next, we have update discussion and action on committees' projects, issues, purchases, and personnel, the first of which is discussion and action on a memorandum of understanding between the town of Wells and the Southern Maine Energy Navigator Pilot Program.
And I believe you've heard Torina, and so I would ask if, with your support, to authorize me to enter into the MOU, as she explained, and I think it'll be a great partnership for our energy advisory committee to be able to work in concert with that group.
Yeah, I think that sounded pretty good. You want a motion?
Is any discussion surrounding that? Nope, all right.
I move to approve participation by the town of Wells in the Southern Maine Energy Navigator Pilot Programs, and to authorize the town manager to sign the related memorandum of understanding.
Second, all those in favor? Five zero. All right, next, we have discussion and action on the Land for Maine's Future Grant and Project Agreement. Yeah, they saw we had Owen. On up, Owen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I prepared a memo that was in your packets, giving a little background and history on this grant opportunity the town has. Was actually involved with a town warrant article at the November ballot, which authorized the Board of Selectmen to pursue negotiations on finalizing the grant application that the Conservation Committee and town put into the Land for Maine Future Board some time ago. It involves the parcels that are up on the screen. The town purchased a 31-acre parcel off Perry Oliver Road. The grant is for reimbursement of the purchase price of that property, I believe it's for $350,000, that's correct, Owen. But part of the process is you apply for the grant, and Land for Maine Future Board looks for matching funds or equates matching funds to other properties, and going into what's called a project agreement on those other properties, as well as the 31-acre parcel that was purchased. So up on the screen, you can see the other highlighted parcels, which are known by the Conservation Committee as the Getchell pasture area. It's a block of land the town has acquired over several years, trying to create a corridor for newly cotton-tail habitat, as well as other wildlife habitat. The process involves getting the parcel surveyed, which the town had already done. Environmental site assessments were performed on each property, too, to make sure there was no contamination of soils on those properties. Appraisals have been done on each of the properties as well, to set the value, and that's what the Land for Maine Future Board looks at when they're agreeing to matching the funds and providing the grant for the purchase of the 31-acre parcel, which has already happened. So this is a grant to be reimbursed for the purchase of that land. So in your packets, I put together a background memo on the process to date, had a copy of the ballot question that was proposed to the voters, and a copy of the draft project agreement. One element of the project agreement that the Board of Selectmen wanted to be worked on, and I've coordinated with a representative from the Land for Maine Future Board, is that places the covenants on the other parcels, in the 31-acre parcel, as far as that it is conservation land, it being maintained as conservation land, the town can establish trails on the land, but it does give them some oversight and review of any activities on the property. And two of the parcels are in key locations to support the Eastern Trail project, so as the Eastern Trail bike path gets developed, a parking lot will be needed, those type of facilities are, would be keyly located on two of the parcels. One would be off Bald Hills Road, and the other would be off Perry Oliver Road itself. And part of the project agreement, we added language, proposed that up to an acre on two of the parcels could be reserved for those activities. It's still subject to the project agreement, but get, making the Land for Maine Future Board aware of it ahead of time, that it would be a permitted activity on those parcels. Other than those specifically named items, any activity the town does on those parcels would require review from their third-party representation, which is the inland fishing wildlife department at DEP, is who they would look for advice for as far as any projects on the property. They're also looking for, you know, future management of the land. Conservation Commission has looked at other management plans for, like the Perkins pasture parcel, which is the wildlife corridor all up in this area. And the state, or the Land for Maine Future Board would eventually be looking for a management plan on the Getchell pasture area as well. And it could be a simple sort of report that gets submitted every year by the Conservation Committee, giving a status of what the property is being used for. So at this point, we were asking the Board of Selectmen to review the materials, make any comments, so that we could move forward with the Land for Maine Future Board.
Do I need to go to the podium? Can you hear me?
I can hear you great, yeah, I think.
Mike's done a really job with this, we've been after this for, you know, several years, you know, we've been more and more. With your permission, I found some figures about what Conservation Commission has attained in grants and bargain sales, which I would say you know, if you just want to pass a few around. It's just a few figures. Keith Fletcher sent me a memo sometime before he died, he compiled these figures, but he had left one figure out, and if you see at the very bottom on the left, where it says the Great Hayth, we received from the Land for Maine's Future back in the year 2007, $10,000, and we have signed a project agreement with them back then. And earlier in the meeting, I decided to be a nice person instead of a smart aleck, and I told Scott that, I asked him where he was on, "Where were you on January 7, 2007?" And he said he didn't know, and I said, "Boy, you were somewhere signing the project agreement as chair of the Wells Selectmen with the Land for Maine's Future Board." And that parcel was bought because it secures the Great Hayth, which some of us are very fond of, and I used to deer hunt down quite a bit. And it sort of, there was a parcel in the way between our land and the rest of the Great Hayth, and that's what we bought with Land for Maine's Future money. And I would just say one more thing, that the oversight from the Land for Maine's Future consists of my sending them a report every year on that parcel. So I did it last year, I just sent it off, and the report says basically, "Have you done anything on the land that is in conflict with the intention you had when you signed the project agreement to keep it conserved?" And I say, "No." And then, they always want to make sure there's a sign there, which actually, somebody walked off at the sign, so we'll put another sign down. So we've been in business with the Land for Maine's Future Board since 2007, and it's, you know, it's protected that piece of the hayth. So, just wanted to point that out to you. The list here totals what grants and bargain sales we have negotiated over the year, and I think there's a few missing here, actually, I just saw this this afternoon, so I thought I might share it with you. And it comes to $1,530,000 in grants, along with nearly $600,000 in bargain sales and gifts that have been negotiated. So that, that would be tax dollars if the town wanted to acquire such things, with tax dollars. Thought I'd point that out to you. Mike's been, Mike and I met with Joe Anderson, who I know from way back, and things are moving forward with the grant. The people have, I had an hour-long talk with the head of the Land for Maine's Future, and just to make sure I understood everything, and everything I, the way I understood it was if she explained it to me. So this, this project agreement basically pledges restrictions that would take the land out of conservation, restrictions are for things that would, we can't put a toxic waste up there, we can't put a fire station there, we can't transfer, we can't sell, we have to keep it open to the public, we can charge money if we want, but we have to keep it open to the public, and we have to allow public to hunt and fish, unless there's a local ordinance, which we could pass if we wanted to. Thanks, Mike. I thought I'd hang around to show the figures, because I feel startled when I walk in. They're all, they're all for $350,000, they're all against $350,000, I couldn't tell.
Thank you, Owen. Discussion of us board.
Well, I'll say, it's a.
Sounds good.
What we get to do, this cooperative agreement or partnership with conservation is one of the best things that this board gets to do, and I want to thank you again for all your hard work.
Thank you, Owen.
Always a pleasure.
I guess there's some action that's needed by the board on this?
No, I was just bringing in an update, we've been working with the Land for Maine Future Board for several months now, they had a change in project manager, so it's been a little bit delayed there, so it'd have been a while. So I wanted to, you know, bring all the information forward again, and just get the head nod to go forward.
Oh, thank you, because I looked all over for the action. I'm like, what am I supposed to say?
Just an update.
Mike, when will, when will we have to act on this?
With our last meeting, I would say, within a month and a half or two months, the grant would be finalized, is that fair to estimate, Owen?
Yeah, I think so.
Yep.
And then, all we have to do is accept the grant and buy the product.
Correct.
The Land for Maine's Future thinks this is a great project, and in fact, they have a lot of respect for Wells because of the work we've, you guys and all of us have done in the past with conserving land. So do you want everyone to close the deal? There's no problem moving ahead, it'll get done in good time.
Well, thanks again, Owen. Don't be a stranger.
Not at all. Nice to see you guys.
Likewise.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have discussion and action to schedule a public hearing on a memorandum of understanding between the Maine between the Maine DEP, Town of Wells, and Wells Sanitary District regarding an air quality monitoring station at Wells Harbor.
And I know Mike has briefed you before, and if you'll remember, your meeting at the library, um, a representative from DOT was there and went through that. Mike, if you just maybe another quick update and schedule a public hearing.
Yeah, this one as well was, uh, it's been on hold for a little while until we worked out a memorandum of understanding between the three parties, um, because the air monitoring station is on town property being the Wells Harbor, but it's also proposed to be located within a sanitary district easement. So the sanitary district got involved, they reviewed the MOU as well, and, uh, and are in favor of it, okay with the parameters the DEP laid out. We had the town attorney review the document. Uh, she had many recommendations and changes to be made from the original, uh, which were all good. Uh, and the, uh, Maine DEP, uh, who's the other party involved, was agreeable to all the town attorney changes.
I move to schedule a public hearing on May twentieth, twenty twenty-five at six P.M. two oh eight Sanford Road in the Littlefield Meeting Room on a memorandum of understanding between the Maine DEP, Town of Wells, and Wells Sanitary District regarding an air quality monitoring station at Wells Harbor.
Second. Favor?
Five zero. Next, we have discussion and action on a construction over limit permit agreement with the Maine Department of Transportation.
Steve is here for that.
Play shirt, Steve.
Uh, good evening, Steve Buckley, Poliworks Director. Um, so the memorandum, uh, in front of you tonight is from the Maine DOT, uh, in relation to some paving work that they're going to do later on this year, um, on Route One. There's two sections they're looking at doing. There's a short section between, um, Sanford Road and Reagan Way, which is just by Bertmill Road, and then the remaining section is mainly in Kennybunk. It starts, um, at Bypass Road and then extends two point one miles north into Kennybunk. Uh, the memorandum that the DOT is looking for us to sign, uh, is just to allow their contractor as part of this construction work, uh, to haul heavy equipment, um, that is, exceeds the, uh, standard legal weight limit, uh, over town roads. Um, and if the town requests, we can request a bond, uh, to cover any potential damages, um, that might result from, at excessive loads. Um, so happy to answer any questions on that.
Do you recommend a bond?
Um, it's not something that people typically, most towns don't typically do. Um, I think I will look at what they're going to propose as a route, um, but the fact that it's Route One, they're probably going to come on fairly well-built roads, uh, so that the chances of damage resulting from that is, is pretty minimal. Um, it's.
I don't believe you're going to need one. I mean, it's, it's a paving project. They're really paving pretty much their own, their own roadway. It'll be, I, I don't think you'll need it. It'll be smooth sailing to Kennybunk from there on.
Uh, what's, what's the proposed dates of construction?
I don't know the exact dates. Um, obviously with this being Route One outside of summer, but beyond that, I don't know yet.
Probably F.
Probably fall, yeah. At, at this point, it's, it'll be September, um, September, October, October, end of October.
Come on, stop.
Okay, everybody good? All right, no motion?
I move to accept and sign the construction over limit permit agreement. Um, is that us or do we have to allow the town?
I believe it requests your signatures on.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, and I end with the agreement.
Second. All is in favor? Five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. Next, we have discussion and action to schedule a public hearing to review annual lodging license applications. Any discussion?
I move to schedule a public hearing on May twentieth, twenty twenty-five at six P.M. two oh eight Sanford Road in the Littlefield Meeting Room to review annual lodging license applications.
Second. All is in favor? Five zero. Uh, next, we have discussion and action to schedule a public hearing to discuss a multi-year disposal and processing proposal provided by Casella. I saw that we had Brian Toomey and Steve here.
You might have received this earlier today if you had a chance, but this came in overnight.
Feel free to pull that chair right back over, guys.
I can kind of tee up, um, while you're seeing and hearing it now. Um, the Waste Advisory, um, Committee, uh, met last evening, um, one of several meetings that we've had. And, um, after a couple of rounds with Casella, um, I think we have negotiated, um, a very good agreement. And, uh, so have it for you and, um, to look at right now, and Steve and, and Brian were instrumental in that, and they're here to present on where we landed.
So, um, we had interviewed, well, there were three major players we interviewed, and one of them being the Casella was the one that, uh, came in the closest fit to us. Uh, we were able to get the rate for municipal solid waste down one oh two a ton. Um, and same thing with construction and demo. And then our, uh, single source recycling at one fifty-four a ton, um, less, um, possible credits depending on the volumes that we send in of material. And our haul fee, which is basically the transfer from the, um, our portion of the transfer station to the Casella side of the transfer station, each haul of those dumpsters is sixty-five dollars per haul. We got the sixty-five dollars per haul for the life of the contract, which is ten years with the town having a five-year option to renew. Uh, the acceleration clauses year after year, um, will be three point five percent up to a maximum of, uh, five percent depending on the consumer price index for, uh, municipal solid waste. And Brian, you were saying that the, at ten-year average of that was?
Three point eight percent. Last ten years. So we, we should be in good shape with, uh, with it less than, than five percent. Uh, so at the end of the ten years, um, uh, at the, at the maximum, the worst-case scenario, I think it was around one fifty-eight a ton, which is what we'd be paying. We start at one oh two, it'd be one fifty-eight. And again, the town has the option, uh, after ten years to renew for another five year with the same terms and, and conditions as we currently have for the first ten years. Plus, they have to submit a, uh, food waste program proposal to us within the next sixty days. The other good thing about it is that would, and this contract, be in contract that they have with the transfer station at the exact same time, even though we have a five-year extension, so plus is in better shape for negotiating that as well.
Great.
Yeah, that's good.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was just flipping through all this while I was sitting.
I'm only looking one page. It's like the second to last page is all in one.
Well, I tried one for, I didn't want to miss something.
Yeah.
Well, normally, obviously, we'd love to have this too well in advance, but the meeting was last evening, and Casella turned this over during the night. And, um, we're under a little bit of a constraint on time, as you know. Our current contract expires June thirtieth, so we wanted to get the public hearing scheduled for the twentieth and be able to lock this if you're in agreement.
And this, these numbers for next year coincide with that budget, we won't be able to budget next year as far as the hauling.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Yep.
Nope, no.
Right before you had expressed that you were, uh, putting the thumbs on to try to get this thing moving.
I know nothing, other than that on TV. Other than that, they were, they're great partners. We had a, had a really nice, um, discussion.
Yep.
I move, I move to schedule a public hearing on May twentieth, twenty twenty-five at six P.M. two oh eight Sanford Road in the Little Feed Field Meeting Room on a multi-year disposal and processing proposal provided by Casella.
Second. All is in favor? Five zero. Thanks again, guys. Appreciate it. All right, next, we have discussion and action to schedule a public hearing to discuss, uh, no, I'm sorry. Already did that, didn't check it off. Next, we have, uh, yeah, discussion and action on updates, personnel and committee assignments, resignations and issues. Uh, we have the resignation of Mariana Arsenal from the Personnel Advisory Committee. And we have the resignation of Carla Bergeron Wilcox from the Personnel Advisory Committee.
I move to accept the resignations and write a letter thanking them for their service.
Second. All is in favor? Five zero. Next, we have discussion and action to accept donations and requests. We have a one hundred, uh, one hundred dollar donation from Ann Dunn and Richard Labonte to the Wells Public Library. We have a sixty-three dollar donation from Jason Carter to the Town of Wells for the We Are Wells Fund. We have a one hundred and twenty-five dollar donation from Dawn Wendland to the Town of Wells for the Founders Park Community Center. We have a one hundred and twenty-five dollar donation from Erica Arsenal, the Town of Wells for the Founders Park Community Center.
I move to accept the generous donations and write letters of thanks to the donors.
Second. All is in favor? Five zero. Next, we have discussion and action to approve minutes of the April first and April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five Selectmen's meeting.
I move for approval of the April first, twenty twenty-five Selectmen meeting minutes.
Second. All is in favor? Five zero.
I move for approval of the April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five Selectmen meeting minutes.
Second. Was I here on the first? Was I, I was here on the one on the first, right? I missed one of them, but I thought that was in March.
Oh, I think you missed the first.
Maybe I did. We might need to retake that vote.
Because it was April Fool's.
Was it? Okay, we got.
You missed the first one.
Yeah, we gotta retake that vote. My apologies.
Four, four zero one.
Time just flies by when you're having fun.
Okay, I gotta say, I move for approval of the April first, twenty twenty-five Selectmen meeting minutes.
Second. All is in favor? Four zero one.
Should be mine.
Sorry, guys.
I move, why don't we do the other one too? I move, I move for approval of the April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five Selectmen meeting minutes.
Second. All is in favor? Five zero. All right, moving on for the, uh, we have new business for the second time this evening. We have open to the public. Same rules apply as last time. Ten minutes set aside, three minutes for each person. I'll invite you up this time.
Could you just take a minute? My name's John Howard, president of Wells forty years. Uh, reason I'm up here tonight is I want to remind folks in town that we're doing bikes for books at the elementary school again. In the past, Ocean Lodge went up the street here on Sanford Road, had bean supper on Saturdays to raise, the first Saturday of the month, to raise money for, to buy sixty bike, we buy sixty bicycles for the elementary school. So Ocean Lodge needs some support. We're opening it up to the community, uh, for a hundred dollar sponsors to help buy the books, the bikes for the kids this year. So I just wanted to get that out there and let you all know that the Selectmen, a few years ago, bought a hundred dollars, uh, hundred dollar support. Anyways, we get on to the next item. I'm not sure, and I just got home from Bangor, so I'm kind of tired. It's been a long day. If on your budget this year, you approve money for the veteran cemeteries throughout the town, the cemeteries that are out in woods, out in the back fields and things like that. In two thousand and fourteen, an article came down from the State House that said all towns in Maine will maintain, uh, the cemeteries that are a hundred years or older, they're considered, and I have it somewhere at home, it's considered a, a museum. I get nothing better to do. I'm retired, so I like to walk through the woods and, and go on tours. And I'm noticing a lot of these cemeteries aren't being taken care of any longer. And I'm just wondering if, and I'm hoping that the town could get back, they're veteran cemeteries. Some of them are a mile or a lot further out into the woods. There's flags out there, and the flags are tattered and torn because no one's been out there. So I'm just asking for it to revisit that warrant that came down from the State House to take care of the veterans, uh, the veteran cemeteries in town as historical sites.
And, and you know, I believe that we have all the cemeteries on the tax maps now. I mean, I worked with Hope Shelley all those years, and she was, we, we, she would locate all of them and they got put on the tax map. So anyone that you can find out there that you have an idea, you can, you can actually get people to, um, if you point out which one it is or what the tax map.
Well, there's, there's over two hundred of them.
Yes.
So, uh, we have photos of every one of them because we went, actually went out and cleaned them and got them, got them up to, up to date. I mean, there had been sixty, seventy years of buildup in these cemeteries, and we did clean them all out, but I'm noticing they're starting to, that, that process has gone away, and I'd like to see it reenacted. It's a very important for our veterans. Everything I have in my life, I owe to the veterans. Um, and I'd like to see the veterans taken care of once again. Last thing, I just want to make a, a note about a young lady here that spoke about the, the, uh, seacoast detailing in here. Last year, I don't know if any of you folks knew about the day it was going on, but if you went by the gas stations, you couldn't get a spot at the gas station because these guys were all buying gas in our town. If you went by the restaurants or all these cool cars parked in the restaurant, that's commerce coming to our town. So we should, we have a, a kid over here, she come back to town, she's one of our Wells High School girls. Her and her husband bought a house in this town and started a business in this town. We should be applauding these kids for coming back and showing others that we're safe. Thank you.
Might be able to give us some insight if you want.
This one's I still want to publicly speak, not if you want.
Okay, I'll talk, I'll be quick. I'm Katie Kelly. I live here in Wells. I also operate Lafayette's Oceanfront Resort and Forbes Seafood Restaurant. And th- thank you for taking the time to listen today. It was a massive undertaking earlier. Um, I am opposed to raising the license fees for the hotels. Um, I've been working in town running Lafayette since nineteen ninety-six. When I first started, the license fee for that hotel was five hundred dollars a year. In about two thousand and three, um, the town proposed raising it to ten dollars a room with no upper cap. And so my hotel went up to fifteen hundred dollars from five hundred, so it tripled. Um, and I was told at the time, and I was the only one who spoke against it, I think at the time, because it happened like in the middle of winter, when nobody was around. But, um, I was told at the time, it was all because of the cottage complexes and the code enforcement needed to hire a new part-time person to handle all of the new hotel rooms in town, because all those cottage complexes are actually hotel rooms. And these new hotel rooms are being sold as seasonal homes, and the town needed to control it. Um, so the ten dollar per room fee is already higher than any other license fee in Maine. And I know this because we operate about thirty-three hotels in Maine and New Hampshire. In Wells, we pay the highest license fee, um, out of any of our hotels. Some of our hotels pay nothing for license fees. Um, with this new increase up to the eighty, my fee would go up to twelve thousand dollars. That's excessive for one business in town. That is somebody's summer job, that is, um, that's a, you know, a new remodel of a room, that's a lot of money for one business in town to take the impact. I'm not a condo hotel, I'm not a timeshare, I can't spread those fees around. That comes directly out of our operating budget. Um, we're also, on top of that, the third largest taxpayer in town, because I do have a lot of really nice property. It's a really nice spot, and I don't complain about paying my taxes, but, um, but I don't want anyone thinking that hotels aren't paying their proportionate share of the cost of running services in this town. I pay a lot of tax dollars, um, for that. So, um, I also provide a lot of jobs in this town, a lot of year-round jobs with benefits. I keep these people employed in January when I do not bring in enough in a month to cover any payroll at all. Um, so payroll in January is way higher than anything I can bring in in January, February, March. Um, but I also provide a lot of seasonal jobs for local people. I tend to run the whole spectrum of the seasonal jobs. I have the fourteen-year-old kids with their first job, and I have all the retirees who just want a job walking around thanking people for coming to the Town of Wells. Um, I think it's a little unfair to just target these fees onto one business in town. And I, I want you to realize how much it does impact one individual business for this. Um, it will drive some of our smaller operators to sell their businesses. And then we're apt to have operators in town who don't want to support the car shows, who don't want to support, um, the Harbor Fest, who don't want to support all the town activities in town, because they're already paying these huge fees, why should they have to pay more? And so, um, I think it's important to look at the whole big picture, not just at one industry. Look at tightening our belt, quite frankly. In twenty twenty, I was looking at a loss of huge revenues. I fired no one, I laid no one off, and I just started operating at a different level. We cut all expenses, but we kept all our people working. And we still did everything in town that we had promised that we would do. So thank you for listening.
Hi, Jackie Simons, Atlanta Cav. I do have several topics, but I'll be really quick. The first is something we haven't even talked about. The first is marathon weekend. We all just survived marathon weekend. And trust me, at my house, it was not a happy weekend. Um, I would request that the Board of Selectmen schedule or arrange or whatever a post-mortem on what went wrong, what went right, maybe the impacts to the communities, the impacts to people, um, and the overall cost and benefit and so forth to the community. Because at some point, this company, which is a for-profit company, not a charity, is going to come back and ask again for permission, and it's going to be too late then to sort of do that study. So I'd ask that you look at it sooner rather than later, and while it's fresh and So I'd ask that you look at it sooner rather than later and while it's fresh in people's minds. That's Marathon Weekend. Lodging licenses and short-term rentals. First of all, thank you for having the fortitude to bring this forward and look at the issues. I'd just like to remind whoever is going to look at all of the data, which obviously is necessary, that not all emergencies that are, um, related to tourism happen at a hotel or happen at a restaurant. They happen on the beaches, they happen in the streets. There's, there's spikes in services that you need to look at as well, and not just the locations, as I heard someone mention. So I just wanted to throw that out there so that you got a real picture of, of the impact. I also am very happy to hear you're looking at Airbnbs. We live in a neighborhood where we fondly refer to the place across the street as the frat house on the beach. It's an Airbnb, the owner is not on site. So when you talk about having a registry or guest registration book or whatever, there's no one there to sign these people in. So Kathy was kind of going down the avenue that, that I was liking as far as automating this somehow, having something that can happen other than, you know, the owner not being there to register people. It is a safety hazard, trust me. There, there are things that go on there that I can't even describe. So, uh, thank you, keep thinking in the same direction. Um, but don't depend on like the standard old guest registration. It's, it's not gonna work because most of these people aren't there. They've either gone on vacation themselves and left their house as an Airbnb, or this is their, this is their business. Finally, I just wanted to say one other thing. All those people that spoke this evening against Wells PD, I just want to say that they simply bring their national political partisan views to the local level. And we don't need that. We don't need Wells to become partisan. And, and I just want everyone to have that viewpoint when you listen to some of this and when you look at some of these people. Because the truth is, Wells PD does a heck of a job protecting our community. And there can't be enough training for these people to support them in what they do. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jack Ford and, uh, I'm a resident of the Town of Wells. Earlier in the meeting, we heard the word police, ICE, training, potential legal problems for the Town of Wells. And, uh, I would just like to remind everybody that they are just a small part of a far larger problem facing this country, facing this state, facing this town. And that is twenty-one million illegal aliens. I repeat, illegal. I also think of the words crime, cartel, human trafficking, murder, and the rest. I, uh, don't understand how the administration could tear down the wall that protected us on our southern border and allow these twenty-one million people to come into this country and to be flown or driven or bused throughout the entire country. And the items that we were facing and dealing with and discussing this night are a larger or a part of this larger problem, and it scares the living bejesus out of me. This is a beautiful town, this is a beautiful country. But there is no country that can survive with twenty-one million people simply walking in. And, uh, it is a reality that we have all seen, and we have to deal with it. Sooner or later, it will affect this town somehow or another. Please God, it doesn't. And anyway, thank you for your time.
Hi, my name's Steve Kenninger. I just wanted to bring up a couple of, of brief points. Um, we heard from speakers earlier tonight about how they didn't appreciate the cooperation with ICE. I think one of these things these people are forgetting is that these people are in the country illegally. That's the first step, they came here illegally. So regardless of what else they do, they've broken the law. And as a law-abiding citizens, laws-abiding, law-abiding country, we need to follow the law. So I strongly support, uh, Chief Putnam's, uh, desire to cooperate with ICE. I wish more communities in Maine would pick up the task and, and, and join the, join the parade. Um, the other point that I wanted to make is that if these people that spoke earlier find this so offensive that, that, um, people who came to this country, um, illegally are being deported, then they should write their congressmen, get ahold of their senators, and have the laws changed. That's where it all starts. And for the time being, um, again, I strongly support the Selectmen and the, uh, police chief and their actions to cooperate with ICE. Thank you.
Um, hello, thank you for, for hearing everyone's concerns. Um, I apologize if I repeat anything anyone said, I was in the hallway earlier, so I was trying to listen on the livestream, but, um, I do also have concerns regarding the collaboration between the Wells Police Department and ICE. Um, I'm not here to speak poorly about the Wells Police Department in any way. Of, um, all of the interactions I've had with the Wells Police have been, um, positive. People, um, officers have been kind and helpful. Um, my concern is, is with ICE itself, not necessarily with the Wells Police Department. Um, and my concerns are varied, um. So I, I tried to break them down into, into, um, pockets, I guess. Um, I'm concerned regarding, uh, the humanity of the, of the practices that I've seen on the news that ICE has been, um, practicing. Um, concerned with legality, I'm concerned for the economy of Wells, and I'm concerned for our communities. Um, so I'll start with humanity, um, which I think is the most important. I think there was a pastor maybe who spoke about, um, that, you know, that all people should be treated, um, with dignity and respect. That, I don't think that's exactly what he said, but, um, all people living here, I think, believe, deserve to be treated with dignity and respect. Um, whether they're here, whether they're born here, or whether they're not, whether, um, depend, no, no matter the color of their skin or what language they speak, or if they have an accent or not. Um, and from what I've seen, um, ICE has not treated people with dignity and respect. Um, and I've seen a lot of suffering, um, that's, has become a, a spectacle, um, on the news. Um, regarding legality, I think, um, it's legally, all people who are in this country have a right to due process. And lately, um, we've been seeing that that is not the case, people aren't getting that due process. Um, people are being, um, picked up, um, they're not able to, to see a judge, they're not able to get, um, uh, a lawyer, and they've been deported, um, to another country, um, or sometimes to other, to locations out of state where they're away from their families and, and any help that they could get. Um, there are quotas that ICE has that, um, cause racial profiling, um, and it, it is a civil rights nightmare, and I don't want that, I don't want Wells to become part of that. Um, Wells is a really nice place to live, and I think that, um, any training that ICE can provide is not going to provide the kind of, um, the kind of training that our, our police need. Um, economically, um, I think someone has said it, uh, Wells relies on tourism. Many people come here from, um, outside of the United States, um, and businesses rely on workers from outside the United States. And I think this, that this collaboration with ICE would put those people at risk and would make people less likely to come here. I would probably be more nervous to come here. Um, Wells is supposedly the friendliest town in Maine, and I don't, and I don't want that to be like a conditional, I don't think it should just be the friendliest town in Maine for people who live in the United States, I think it should be that way for everyone, so. Um, and then in terms of our community, I think that people, I think that people are afraid of all sorts of things right now. Um, there are, there are things that people are nervous about, whether it's political unrest or increased natural disasters. As a seaside town, um, we're impacted by heavier storms, sea level rise, climate change might be threatening our food system, there's all sorts of things that people are concerned about. And right, yeah.
Just so you know, we're at four, four minutes, four and a half minutes right now.
Okay, sorry, I'll be quick.
No, it's okay.
Okay, sorry. Um, I just think that right now immigrants are one of the groups of people who are being scapegoated, um, and that's not going to help protect us and keep us safe. And I think the only thing that can do that is for us to come together and to help each other to, um, to make sure that every member of our community, you know, has shelter, has food, has, has a place to, to be with each other, um, and to help each other get what we need. Um, and the more people that we have to do that, and the more different types of people and more different ideas that we have to do that, uh, makes us a stronger community. Um, and I think that's, that's what we need in terms of public safety. Thank you.
Uh, just one second, so I, I believe we're at the ten minutes, is the board willing to hear more comments?
Why not?
Okay, everybody good with that?
Sure.
Uh, can we just get an answer for Buck real quick first? I'm sorry, Steve's been standing back there, I said.
Uh, yeah, so I just wanted to, uh, I'll call, oh yeah. Um, answer the, the question about the veteran cemetery that was asked earlier. Uh, so Polite Works, we have, um, started this year about a week ago, going around to start the process of cleaning those. Um, they were cleaned last year, I don't know previous years, I believe there was a bit of a, um, a break unfortunately due to, um, some volunteers that had, who were no longer willing, uh, able to do, um, the work. But we have, um, started, will continue. Um, as you mentioned, there are a significant number of, of cemeteries in Wells. Um, two hundred total, uh, about a hundred and twenty of those have veterans that are identified in those. Um, we'll prioritize those first, uh, those are the ones that we want to make sure that we, we get to this year. Uh, and if time allows, we will carry on with the remainder, but we have, we have started that process. I will let you, let you know that that, uh, is something that we take very seriously and, uh, want to make sure that they're being cared for properly, so.
One of my concerns is I, is okay, please, one of my concerns with that is I do see the local, the your regular full-timers out there cleaning these. But there was money set aside and we voted on it every year to hire summer, summer folks to do this, to do the job. And I know there's eleven of them that town doesn't, we have to do them every, well, they have to do them every two weeks. But the ones that are in the woods are not getting done, I'm just saying, I, I, I don't want to be pointing fingers at any, any group, you guys doing a wonderful job, I love you, you, I used to, I used to be one of those, I was the first one I did this.
Yep.
And, uh, it's just important to me that the veterans are looked after and those flags are replaced and at least they have to be able to be transverse, folks have to be able to walk through them and not trip over logs and stumps and, you know, the squirrels pull some of the bones out and lay man, that shouldn't be there for kids to see it. So I'm just concerned, I'm not knocking E B W anyway, just saying it was, it did come down from a, from a disaster. It was supposed to be done, we did vote in two thousand thirteen for money to buy all the equipment for it, and then we were voting for the monies, and I just was wondering if we're still voting for monies to have that summer program, it's a very important thing.
Thank you, Buck. Just one second, is there anybody that hasn't spoken that would like an opportunity to speak at this time? Avery.
Hello, uh, Avery Suter. Uh, I'd just like to remind everyone, uh, who the immigrants in our town are. Uh, they are the people that I sit next to at lectures at YCCC. Uh, they're the people that I work with in Perkins Cove. Uh, they're my neighbors that live in my neighborhood, in houses near me. And they're some of the most special people that I know, some very hardworking people. And people that don't deserve the vitriol that is being sent their way by this, frankly misinformation, that immigrants constitute a national security threat. There is no basis for that in reality. Seventy percent of the people that have been deported to El Salvador have zero criminal background. And the idea that the majority of people that are here, uh, are here illegally is not true either. ICE has targeted folks that have temporary protected status, that are asylum seekers, that are green card holders, and most recently, uh, two young children, US citizens that were deported, uh, along with their immigrant mother, separated from their father. This is unconstitutional, it's frankly evil. And on a national level, I think it's really, really concerning. On the local level, I have spoken personally with Chief Putnam. I believe that she and her officers do have, uh, the right state of mind to deal with this. I'm confident in them. I believe that this program is not correct for the Town of Wells. I think that they have the resources that they need to enforce the law when crimes occur. And I don't believe that they need this, uh, extra power to enforce deportation warrants, basically doing the job of the federal government, uh, at the local level. So I appreciate your time, thank you.
Just, I just want to make sure, is there anybody that hasn't spoken that would like a chance to speak?
I'd like to say one thing, that the gentleman that spoke before is my husband, as many of you know. He is a first-generation American here, both of his parents immigrated from Ireland legally. And so he has a right to talk about the difference between illegal and legal. They suffered, they came through Ellis Island, they were vetted, they were checked, they had sponsors, they didn't take a penny from this country, not one. They came into the country, they got right to work, and they made their way and graduated three of their children from college. So he has a right to speak about the difference between illegal and legal. And nobody regrets any legal alien who comes here. Any legal immigrant who comes here has been a blessing to this country because they came legally, and they came for the right reasons. Having said that, as I say, he's first-generation American, he has a right to speak about legal and illegal immigration. And then I just, if I can, just ask a general question. Of all of the people who spoke here tonight, they asked for a lot of things from the Select Board. They asked you to review an M O A, they asked you to look into legal this and funds of this and everything. I would just like to know going forward, do you expect to be taking any other actions with regard to this or mounting any investigations? Because if you are, we need to be informed of that ahead of time so we can participate. And I just would like an answer to that at some point, thank you.
All right. We're gonna move on to the Town Manager's Report. Mike?
I will make a very abbreviated report out of respect for the time this evening. Um, we've had great news on our ocean rescue applicants. Um, we have thirty-two, twenty-two have already passed the interview process, um, that's well above last year, so that's great news. Mike York has the harbor, uh, functioning very well. Um, we just, uh, recognized that we have what's called a ship grant. Um, and so that's going to be coming our way, uh, later this summer. Um, you heard earlier about, um, some questions regarding Sweetser and our efforts to try to enter into an agreement with Sweetser for a, a liaison for mental health purposes. We have interviewed over the past year plus, and we have selected a candidate. And that candidate came and met with some of our department heads today. They will be being introduced to all of you in the very near future. I think that will be a tremendous asset to our community. I think that will be a tremendous asset to our community and to our police department to be able to be a resource to citizens in need, to be able to go on calls with our officers who are responding to domestic violence situations, potentially a drug overdose situation. I think it will be a tremendous asset. So all of those efforts have come to fruition, so we'll be happy to be having you learn that new person very soon. Pickleball courts are due to be painted before long if the weather would just change a little bit. So Tina probably will get angry at me, but to say, in the very near future, we hope those will be opening and stand by and monitor the Rec Department's website. Public Works Department is very, very busy, as you might imagine. Paving has been completed over in Webb Han and Harbor Road, a lot of drainage work happening, as you might have seen on Perry Oliver Road. The roadside mower is out, so beware that that's out there, some good things happening. Absentee ballots are now available from the Town Clerk's Office. Those became available yesterday on May 5th. And interviews for library assistant, two candidates are being held today, tomorrow and Thursday. And Rebecca has completed a draft of what we've been talking about in the past, about a committee handbook. So we're reviewing that together now and that will be something that we bring to the board for consideration. But I think it'll be a very useful guide to our board and committee members, some guardrails to help them understand the parameters in which they function. So that's a very abbreviated report, but a lot of good things happening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Sure. All right, next we have Select Board comments, either Subcommittee reports or individual Select Board member comments. Does anybody have anything?
I have some.
Okay.
I just have one thing, tomorrow, I'm sorry.
I just want to say that, you know, we have very lively meetings and we have, you know, full meetings and empty meetings. And tonight was a full meeting and there was a lot going on with a lot of discussion. And I personally want to thank our chair for handling it as well as he did. And sometimes you forget that the person next to you is, is responsible for running the meetings when they're going on, because you just know it was John. And so I, I just want to say thank you, John, to you tonight. I think you did a great job.
Well, thank you.
And always.
I appreciate your kind words. Thank you very much, Kathy. Thank you for the rest of the board and to the people in the, in the audience, so. Don't do well with compliments. We can move on from that.
So I just have one thing, the York County Budget Committee starts tomorrow night and will probably go on through the end of May. And thanks again, Scott, for accommodating for me for that.
You're welcome. Able to give a lot of input on that one, Jim?
Uh, more so than, than, I think this is going to be more so this year than in prior years. There were some issues that, that, items of the budget that came up that background information was not being provided for and Budget Committee really didn't have any input on. A majority of the Budget Committee last year indicated that that's not a proper procedure, so hopefully yes, more input on more things.
Okay. Thanks for the update, Jim. Does anybody else have anything on the board? All right. And we have, next up, we have an executive session to discuss personnel matter with Town Manager. Do we have motion?
I'm going to enter into executive session to discuss the personnel matter with the Town Manager pursuant to 1 MRS subsection 405-6A.
Second, favor, five zero. Right, we'll just go ahead and kill the audio. We'll just go ahead and kill the audio.